Oh, the city council meeting to orders at seven thirty and we are all present. And so in attendance is council member, uh, Reese, council member Schultz, uh, and council member McPerrin, council member Dominguez, and council member Martinez. Uh, so the first order of business is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. It's our discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, sign. The ayes have it. Next is approval of the consent agenda. Uh, and that's the council men- uh, minutes from February twentieth. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. It is approved. We'll move on to reports. And I don't see the city engineer here, so uh, we'll move on to the others. Uh, so starting off with city manager Kurtz.
Um, my, my report is presented and I have nothing further to add unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions from the, uh, members of the council about your report?
It's the program you have in here, all the whole entire, uh, list of course for, yes. Yeah, okay.
All right. Anything further from streets? No, unless there's any questions. Aren't there any questions from the council? All right, next up our police. Any kind of questions for the police report as part of the? Second. All right, hearing none, we'll go to, uh, city engineer Leo, uh, Foley.
Thank you. Couple of, couple of reports, um, we met with the city manager and, uh, people from Wheelie about, um, sewer service. So we're kind of looking at a broader picture of how do we service not only that area, but other areas in that whole region, that whole part of town. And, um, we did a sewer up of Wallon Street in two thousand and seven. Uh, looking at some of the properties, but now, um, some of those properties are a little lower. So they're probably gonna have to look at either a lift station or some type of a grinder system in order to sew them, uh, at least for maybe a part time until we figure out maybe another regional lift station. So that's kind of our, the first thing we've been kind of looking at, what does it take? And it shouldn't take us too long. A couple of, uh, couple of, uh, couple of more days, we should have a pretty good idea. So that, that's number one. And number two is of course with the Western Pretty Food News and some of that. Um, but west, the wastewater treatment plant, the baseline improvements. We, um, just got a report today from our engineers that more or less had a, uh, a plan of how could we phase that? The first part of it into a couple of different phases. What's like the most critical things that would have to be done? And what things could probably become later? For instance, just, um, some quick examples of the screw pumps. They're big problems. You can't operate without those. They're having all kinds of problems. Those need to be replaced. And when, so that would have to be in the first phase. Maybe the clarifier could come a little later. Clarifiers, because you're already doing so great treatment. So that, that's the kind of things we're working on right there. That's the treatment. And the water treatment plant, the well is, um, in place. There still have to do some electrical on it and the control cabinet, but other than that, that's in really good, good position right now. The roof is a hundred percent done. It has not been leak tested. We still waiting on a warranty. But other than that, um, again, I know they work for the library, but that's first time I've been in ball with DC Taylor and they, they seem to do a good job. We had an inspector over there watching and he was very impressed with their work. I did talk to John who's not here that it, um, it rained really good in flood cities yesterday. I don't know last night how much it rained here, but, uh, he said no puddles, nothing. So that's all good news so far. That's all I had today.
Okay. Are there any questions for the city engineer? Next up, our committee reports. Committees to report.
Um, I think Mr. Merrill, we had was, we had the city committee get together, um, to identify applicants for the electric superintendent position, which they did. And then, um, we, um, performed our interviews last night. Um, with the applicants and I'll be able to provide you some things here in the short future. Um, uh, who have to sit down here.
Okay, next on the agenda is item five, uh, public hearing on the proposed zoning changes to the west side of North Elm Street, uh, to R two and C two. Um, so the, uh, to open the public hearing on the proposed zoning changes, uh, there needs to be a motion, a second, and then a roll call vote. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing?
Is there a second? There's a second. Uh, is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Martinez? The name of the, yes, with Perrin, yes. So it shouldn't pass the sides of the, okay.
So we're now, uh, at the place where, uh, we have public comments and correspondence. Uh, let's start with any correspondence or folks have received. All right, then we'll open it for comments.
So Mr. Mayor, I would just add that, um, for staff, we did receive some, uh, inquiries. Um, we received from, uh, Ms. Liggins from Twinkle Company. Um, and Terry Burt, our building inspectors here as well. Um, but we did follow up with that company to answer those questions. Um, I think another, uh, another business owner, Mr. Bison, had reached out to us with some questions as well about the zoning. And then Liquid Grow, as I understood, they had, and so they do have some representatives here. Um, so many of the other ones, I mean, we certainly want to have them, you know, express any concerns or questions that they have at this moment.
Any folks that would like to address the council?
So, um, just to, we cannot, yeah. So just to, just to clarify, so over the past, uh, years that the, the construction that has gone on on Elm Street, um, has not followed an M two. Um, and it's not necessarily your area, but everything then south of that does not, it's not within the M two. So what we're attempting to do is correct, you know, the section based on what is currently there, which then I know that that brought some concerns up with you folks as far as your business. Um, it was my understanding though, that we had a conversation was able to clarify that that change should not impact your business as it's being, as your, as, as what you're doing there now. So I, if you had additional questions to that and they didn't clarify it, you know, that's the only reason why we're looking to change the zoning is to correct it. So the others would fit what they were, they're currently at for the zoning. Because they don't fit M two. We have a school that was built that does not fit into M two.
That would have been M two because it wasn't there. That was farm ground.
But the problem was is that there was nothing taking, it should have been corrected when it was built. And I'm not going to speak against, you know, the people that were overseeing or managing those situations. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to correct, to bring the zoning to meet what's existing. Cause we have residential, we have multi-residential, we have, um, we have a, the Heritage Foundation. So you have a museum. Um, so the thing is, is that those things don't fit into an M two zone. So that's, there was no other type of, um, and I know Terry, you can kind of explain, if you have anything more to explain. I mean, we have no other other thing that we're looking at other than trying to correct what's existing.
Trying to go ahead, I'm Terry, I'm a business, trying to go ahead and, uh, everything is more and more important. Not, uh, the city suits the growth. And by, by no means, uh, I've been trying to pushing these options. The thing is to make sure that things are falling into the zones that they need to fall into. And to let it go ahead and conform to what the future goal of the city is. Like with the comprehensive plans. Um, you're with the, yeah, I, I thought the word. And, uh, you know, I, I think there's been years in there. It's the office in the zone.
That.
Sorry, sorry.
You can turn it on, I do.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what everything is, but, um, what I see is it looks like we have offices in here still.
I shot.
Yeah, I shot, so that would be a, well, I consider it. Yes, that needs to, the next first two is, you should see their efforts and I suspect they will. They're getting changed to the C two. What's the effect of that? Given that we're currently M two.
Um, can I ask Terry a question? Could you please explain the, the difference between the M two and the C two? So that we can have a better clarification?
Well, so you're M two. The M two is a commercial, is an industrial.
A heavy industrial, correct?
Yes. And usually you see a lot of M, M two heavy industrial, uh, zoning around rail spurs. With the improvements to get their stuff by rail and they have to, they build businesses around there. Uh, industrial businesses in that field and so forth. Uh, the C two zoning, well, there are two, there are two types of C zoning. C one, which is just a, uh, more for just offices and so forth. You get into your C two zoning, which is more.
Light industrial?
Industrial, yeah. I guess you could call it that. They, they allow offices. You know, they allow contract shops. They allow storage and, you know, and so forth. But that's, that's pretty much the difference is you're going from a heavy industrial to a general, uh, commercial, which is gonna allow, allow a lot of them stuff. That's, that's actually there now.
Does it, does it allow, uh, manufacturing in a C two?
Not in a C two.
Then that goes back to this fellow's question too, but I'll wait till you get the confirmation.
I have it right here. C two and M one, brand two.
Yes, and you're, you're.
I printed it right off the city website.
So your permitted principal use has been C can zone for your own more sales, okay? You know, car lots and so forth. Uh, bus terminals, business and professional offices. There are some order, clubs and lounges. There's, you know, there's a club. Um, commercial amusement, dance, music, schools, drive leaders. You can have a dwelling, a shop. So you could have a dwelling on the second row, you could do, you know, um, farm implement sales, service and repair. Uh, hotels and hotels. Lumberyards, medical dental and chiropractic clinics, personal service and repair shops. You know, plumbing and heating sales. So you could have most contractors made where they have their company out of them. Okay, uh, printing shops, the, you know, you have your, uh, public buildings and so forth. The public buildings would be like the city one put up, uh, plus something like that, you know, okay? Uh, then you can have actual public garages, storage garages, parking lots. We do have, we've heard, uh, restaurant, nightclubs, uh, cafes and taverns, retail businesses. And then wholesale, display and sales. That'll be your general, you know, commercial.
So, so if I understood this fellow's question, uh, he's concerned that, that they're covered with their current business. But if they were to expand, would that fit within that zoning? And I don't know that we know the answer without knowing what you might want to expand to.
And it's not a question I could answer today. When you're sitting on each property that's heavy industrial and you have heavy industrial flocks that you find something to act upon and that rocks pulled up underneath you. How do you feel like you're something being taken away from?
Isn't there anything that's from Twinkle along up and around performing to the zone that's there now?
It, it'll be the C.
No, it's gonna be changed. It's, no, but if it's, there's a trend on, okay? From Twinkle, man, they don't know. Okay, so we got, the school has an office there. Why since the school won't be at that?
Should have been a lot of it.
I guess that's, that's stiff with me. We've been there for over forty years, since, since the sixties. And all of a sudden, you're getting run yanked out from us and we've been in business there. That's been building business since sixty seven as a, as a fabricator. And all of a sudden, you guys are saying, nope, nope, nope. And to me, what you're saying, because you're saying the same thing to Liquid Grow and you're saying the same thing to Hon Ready Mix and to ASAP. Is you're fine today, but if anything changes to the business, you guys can't do business what you're doing. If you sell, if you whatever, because then you have to conform to the C two, which means fertilizer plant cannot be there. The concrete that.
And that's the worry, we're not saying.
Yes, you are, because when it sells, it's gonna go to C two.
No, 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 no. If, if it goes, if this goes through, it goes to C two, correct. Okay, but you can still perform whatever you're doing there unless you can stop operations all over a year. The same with every other business in there, it is, you're considered non-conforming. It doesn't affect your taxes. It doesn't affect what you're actually doing there. As long as, as long as you have your business there and you don't put operations for more than a year.
Even if it sells.
Even if it sells, it still suit the land. It doesn't go with the ownership. It goes with the rent.
Can we get that in writing?
It's right here.
It's in the, it's in the.
But that's, that's, you know, we, we don't want it for people. It's just not a way that you want to do anything like that. We, we need your business. But what, what this is trying to do is down the road, if someone, you may sign up and say, and you, or you quit your business, you're done. We want to be able to have something committed there that would be allowed in the zone. Or if it was M two, if somebody wanted to go ahead and put a garden house there, can't do it. Okay, or if someone wanted to put something that isn't allowed in the, in a, uh, empty, or isn't allowed in a empty zone and zone C two, they can do it. You know, in, in the, if you look at the back of the book, where it talks about your, your, uh, non-conforming. I mean, it tells you what, you know.
So if you set up, okay, to another fabric.
Yeah.
And they start business immediately.
Yeah.
Within years, right, right. Within that year's time, there is no restriction on what can be done.
No.
They can still operate as an M two.
You can operate for your fabrication, any fabrication business. If you're running a fabrication business making elevators and someone comes in and wants to go ahead and, uh, do something similar, but not, uh, an elevator, but you're still doing the same use. Then you're fine. Am I correct on that, Lee?
That's how I understand our code, yeah.
So she asked for this in writing and you said it's in the code. Did you give her, do, do you know where it's at in the code?
Well, if it's on the website, yeah, yeah.
All right. Are there other public comments?
Yes. Man, I'm Brad Hakers, I'm here remotely. Um, I totally agree with like cleaning up the zoning on Elm Street, especially in the residential district and stuff. My main concern is just because I get a lot of phone calls from some of the business owners on the highway and ASAP on, top of Liquid Grow is like, currently they're conforming the way they are now and they're basically gonna take the conforming business and make them non-conforming. So I think they're just wanting to have some reassurance that, you know, it's not gonna change how they do business. And doesn't answer in going in the future. So I think we answered the question.
I was gonna say, yes.
Because right now, like, pretty like the ready mix, for example, you can do that in M one, M two, but you cannot do that in C three. So if it was closed for some reason and be vacant for a period of time, somebody would come back and do a ready mix. They wouldn't be able to. I know it's a long shot, but it's, there's something to think about. You're on the right track.
And, and you said three, C three, but I think we're talking.
C two, yeah. There's, 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 there's an M two and an M one. There's a heavy and then there's a white industrial. There's a lot going on there, but I think, um, right now those businesses are conforming and basically by changing it to make them non-conforming. So just some reassurances that it's not gonna, yeah, affect their business and the growth of businesses important.
Right. Are there other questions that are concerns? I want to make sure that.
One thing I would like to see the city do going forward when this comes up is that the only notice that was given was in the legal section of the index, which I understand is new pavement, that's fine. And all that was listed was the parcel numbers. There were no addresses given and legal restrictions. I got to the amusement and that's how I found it. I don't understand why a letter could not have been sent out to all the people that were affected by this. It's a fair chunk of property we're talking about recently. And I think that a notice we've been, when other rezoning, there was another rezoning that involved us within so close and we were sent a notice. And it's just not a great look when we only put it in the paper by a partial number and no addresses for any. I just think the, the letter to the business owners and the property owners that it's affected would have them. And I, thanks.
And I get an answer to that. So the difference was, is that the first one you would have received is, um, because you had an individual that requested a rezoning. Um, this rezoning was done, um, is being looked at by the city. And so again, our process, we had followed under our attorney. Um, and so what we can do, um, going forward is we can just make sure that as the city that we, we make our process consistent is the same as if it was an individual that was requesting. Because there are two different processes that you go through. And so we certainly have, I mean, we may know that because you had made that statement with the clerk. And so we did note that. So going forward, we will certainly take a look at doing that and, and make that recommendation with our attorneys that we want both processes to be consistent.
Thanks. All right, are there any other fellow comments?
So I would just, um, I would just also add, so you have, so with a public hearing, there's three readings. And so they'll go through the first reading tonight. It doesn't mean that during the, in the middle of this, um, if there's more discussion, no matter what, you have three, you can do three, your three readings. You've got your action for those. Um, and it's not saying, you know, based on what you're hearing, you know, you can make a decision or if you're, if you're based on what you would like to see, whether you go through with it or you want to see it come back for us to, to revisit. So I just want, for some of us, for new council members may not understand about the three readings and the process of that. But that is the purpose of having the three readings is so you allow your public to come forward and be able to present their concerns and, um, and then you can base your action on that. Um, I would just add, you know, again, for those that we appreciate that you brought that, you know, brought this to our attention. I think, um, what we owe you then from here too, is what we have within that code and identifying for you. So you have that knowledge going forward. So if you look to change your business, to grow your business, you know where it's at and you can identify it in that code. Um, so you're best prepared if you, if you have future plans um, for your property. Is that, you know, unless anybody else has any other questions. Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Any other questions? All right, uh, so now I would entertain a motion to close, uh, the public hearing uh, on the proposed zoning changes to the west side of North Elm Street, uh, to R two and C two. And it's a roll call vote. So first of all, is there?
Motion to close public hearing?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Martinez? Reese?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McPerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
That's motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Okay, so then, uh, under five, item four, uh, ordinance of twenty twenty-four, zero, three, zero, five, hyphen, five. And ordinance of mending the city of West Liberty zoning map to establish the zoning of thirty-five parcels of land on the west side of North Elm Street from Railroad Park to Rainbow Drive, organizing into two categories, R two and C two, removing M one and M two, uh, in the first reading. So is that the reading or do we read more? That's the first reading.
Yeah, that's it.
Is there a motion to, um, approve the first reading?
Motion to approve first reading?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's a roll call vote. Well, first is our discussion. If I'm hearing what we heard from city manager Kurtz, uh, we could also do the second and third reading today or we can wait, but that will require motions from the council to do so.
Well, that may, we would be able to do it on this one.
On the next, okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, chair, or the, I recognize, um, councilwoman.
Yeah, um, so I just wanted to make sure that we have, absolutely were sure that their businesses will be non-conforming. I don't really like understand it specifically, but, um, sometimes our code, what is written in there, um, has changed legally. So have we had, like, do we have an attorney that's, that could say yes, or, or is it up to us? It's not, our attorney is the one who has directed us to make that change. Okay, um, because of, um, how our zoning and how, how Elm Street has been established and what is existing in that versus. No, I think, I, I agree. I think it's a good change, but I also want the businesses to be assured that it's not going to affect them, like we've explained.
My, my thinking is that since we cannot do any additional readings today, this gives them an opportunity for the folks that are here and others, uh, to mold this and consider this, uh, engraved retail.
Had, this has gone through the nine four, correct?
Yes, the, the, getting in zoning that along with Terry, um, to go over everything. And originally there was a different hit protocol just to change the, all to go in. There are new risks, different zoning on that, even the order to bring it into the way that it should be with the comprehensive thing. Like they put these two different ones. And if you look at the map that I sent, you can see that R two is in this C two.
Yeah, we, we legally, yeah, this is, that brings it into the legal, um, use of what is there.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
McPerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, one public hearing down, one public hearing to go. Uh, item number six, A. Uh, six A, public hearing on proposed, uh, zoning change for the annexation of Wheelie Chevrolet just west of corporate city limits, uh, from agriculture to C two. Um, opening the public hearing will require a
Motion.
Motion made by, uh, the mayor pro tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Fraser?
Yes.
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Okay, we're now in a public hearing and so, uh, is there any correspondence that anyone has received regarding this?
Mr. Mayor, not to my knowledge, have we received any correspondence on, um, the, the Wheelie property? Um, just so, so for this situation here, um, the Wheelies recently annexed their property in. And when you do a new annexation, it comes in as a one for agriculture. And so our next step then is to bring it to the C two, um, for its existence.
All right, are there public comments? Are there public comments? Are there public comments? Hearing none, um, I will entertain a, uh, motion, uh, to close the public hearing.
Motion to close?
Is there a second?
Second.
The clerk will call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
Martinez? Dominguez?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Friesit?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Okay, so next step is ordinance twenty twenty-four zero, uh, R three zero five hyphen zero six. An ordinance amending the city of West Liberty's zoning map to establish the zoning of a parcel of land. Belonging to Wheelie Chevrolet Incorporated from the current zoning classification of A one agricultural district. To C two general retail district. And so this would be the first reading. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Friesit?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Okay, we are now on item seven, vendor voucher claims. Uh, the list, uh, was provided to you and amounts to four hundred and fifty-five thousand. Uh, eighty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents.
Motion to approve?
Has it been a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there discussion? Hearing no discussion, oops, sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to, um, make mention that, uh, there were a couple of line items on. Five. And eight that were explained when I asked, is not twenty cents or ninety-eight cents, but twenty dollars. Ninety-eight dollars. It was just a matter of decimal point. I always got me in that.
Thank you for catching that. All right, is there further discussion? Hearing none, um, this is, uh, just a consent vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing none, uh, the motion is approved. Uh, public comments and correspondence. Uh, first of all, are there any other public comments, uh, from folks that are in the general's ear tonight? Hearing none, we'll move to, uh, comments from the city council. First, uh. Congress. Yeah, now we're.
I have not received any public.
Thank you, council member, for reason. Okay.
I do not have.
I do not have anything. I do have one thing. Um, I had a committee member reach out and ask where we were at on this solar agreement process, um, because they're ready. To get their solar up and, um, I know that we kind of, uh, talked about a prelim agreement and everything, um. So I don't know if there's a, I know we can't talk about it because it's not on the agenda, but I think it'd be important to. Bring up the conversation, especially with the weather getting better. I think people are gonna start getting E M C to get that.
And that's something that are, that, that's in our radar, especially once we get the electric superintendent, um, finalized. I believe that will be one of the priorities.
Oh, perfect. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Representative, Representative Martinez. All right, uh, City Manager Gertz?
I'm not listening.
Okay, City Clerk? Okay. All right, item nine, A, discussion and appropriate action by the city council of West Liberty on sending. An RFQ out for sidewalk repair in the city of West, uh, uh, Liberty, Iowa. This is a discussion, then, uh, motion, and then consent vote. Information's in your packet, questions on this. Is there a motion to approve, uh, uh, this action?
Motion to approve this action? On the Q out for sidewalk repair within the city of West Liberty.
A second. All those in favor, oh, is there further discuss? No, we had discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay sign. The eyes have it. Item D, discussion and appropriate action by the city council of the West Liberty, Iowa. On repairs to the West Liberty Volunteer Fire Department ladder truck not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. From the fire reserve, um, from fire reserve. Is there discussion?
I, I did have a question and I, we, um, the city manager explained it pretty well, but, um, like on the. The document that we got where it lists what the person who gave the quote was seeing, they say this is a really rough. Estimate and they don't really have any individualized estimates and it's a, a straight flat fifty thousand. And so I had asked if we had, um, submitted any other, um, bids because it's such a high number to anybody else. And I was told that, you know, the fire department did their due diligence, but I just.
Yeah, I got one.
We all, I don't know, I don't know. I, I just would have liked more information or, or at least like itemized. Estimate, estimates, but I don't know if, I mean, they're the experts, maybe that's the closest in Minnesota place to get your fire engine fixed. I don't know. So that's the only thoughts that I could have.
They spoke at this on loss.
Yeah, that, are you asking or saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, what I heard, remember hearing in the last meeting was this difficulty with it on first of all, finding anyone who. Uh, would do this and then the rough estimate on it. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, I think there was few places that could actually work on it, right?
And that they were pretty confident and.
This one.
Yes, yeah, that's what I remember, I.
And I, I just wanna say, I mean, council member Dominguez is, is correcting the process, is our procedure is to request. Um, for that cost three quotes. Um, and then you, and that was what I was understanding their report was to us was. That they were unable to get those additional quotes because they were limited to who could do the work. And so based on that, that's where, um. You know, and I had asked that they said it before the village of these folks to get their, you know, the people which they did. And, and that's, you know, where we're at with the situation and then it's up to council. I mean, if you, if you still prefer them to go back. And take the additional steps, I mean, that's within your action. And that's what our action item.
Yeah.
Kind of.
I think if they already did it, then that's great. I'm just thinking odd, from an audit perspective. Are we gonna get deemed if we can't show that we tried, but nobody did?
We're, we're gonna get things.
If we didn't do that, yes, yeah, you're right.
And they put it, it looks like they put not to exceed a certain dollar amount.
Is there further? Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The, uh, eyes appear to have it, uh, the, uh. Action is, uh, approved. Resolution twenty twenty-four zero three zero five hyphen one three six, a resolution. To approve reimbursement to slightly vintage amber and route, uh, Curdona. Curdona, um, for the West Liberty Economic Development Matching Fund grant in the city of West Liberty, Iowa. Um, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
Probably abstentions and we do.
Okay, all right, so note the abstention, um, is there further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just say that, um, our economic development director, Mr. Gertz, would like to say anything for this project.
Yeah, uh, this council regrets to award, uh, the grant, so I want to go to the Perkins and my business downtown. Utilize that grant as requested to replace and repair the roof and property. I've been over there, but straight, because of that. The two pumpers upstairs are now habitable, but they were not before. And though it hasn't been filled, which is great, um, and, uh. My business dad's, he was not. So the Perkins provided, uh, the clear checks from their bank account and they endorsed it.
Further discussion? All right, it's a roll call vote. The clerk will call the roll.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Upstate?
Martinez?
Yes.
Friesit?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero, and one, seven.
Next up is resolution twenty twenty-four zero three zero five hyphen one three seven, a resolution to approve. Payment to D C Taylor Company for well number two roofing project at the city. Uh, at the West Liberty Electrical Plant in the city of West Liberty, Iowa. And it's a roll call vote. Is there a, a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve resolution?
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded, is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Schultz?
Yes.
Friesit?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
All right, next up is a, uh, closed session, uh, proposal. Uh, it is to enter into a. Pursuant to Iowa code, chapter twenty-one point five parentheses J in parentheses. To discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure. Could reasonably, uh, expect, be reasonably expected to increase the price. The governmental body would have to pay for that property or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for the property. The minutes and audio of the session closed under this paragraph shall be. Uh, available to the public or for public examination when the transaction discussed is completed. Is there a motion to move into closed session?
Motion to move into closed session?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, the clerk will call the roll.
Dominguez?
Yes.
Martinez? Friesit?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
Okay, so now we are back in open session. Is there a motion regarding what was discussed in closed session?
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and pursue, uh, the. Um, any possibility of acquiring property within the city of West Liberty?
Okay, is there a second? Is there further discussion or is there discussion, sorry?
Do you need anything else from that motion?
The motion is to pursue the possibility of acquiring property within the city of West Liberty.
Yes.
That, that was discussed in closed session.
That was discussed in closed session.
And your second is still fine?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez. All right, is there discussion?
I do have one thing, um, on this, the direction for your city.
Oh, that should probably have been in my motion. I apologize. I can.
You're amending your motion too.
Yes, I'd, I'd like the, for the, uh, city manager, along with my motion, I'd like the city manager to. Uh, go into discussions with the property owners, um, on acquiring the property.
Second is still good?
Yes.
All right. The, is there further discussion or discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Friesit?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Dominguez?
Yes.
McFerrin?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes by zero.
All right. One more agenda item. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.